I'd like to call this October 1st, work session, the order. Herbie, what do you have?
First thing, next week is-
Before we get started, just, we were in executive session discussing a personnel issue, and that's what took us so long, so I just want to put that on record. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next week is Fire Prevention Week, and I'd like to, if I can provide Maria with the wording for a resolution proclaiming Fire Prevention Week to be put on the agenda. Second thing, this week, we are conducting fire prevention classes at all the elementary schools in town and preschools, and that'll be done Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Yesterday, I attended the fallen firefighters memorial service for Bucks County and Doylestown. Fire Police Captain Dave Wintz's name was added to that memorial this year. It was a very moving ceremony, and well done by the county fire service. Next Sunday is the fallen, the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and Dave's name will be added to that memorial next year. In the process of doing the spill plans for the new borough garage, and I think there's probably some significant changes that'll need to be made to that plan from the draft. We continue to install CO and smoke alarms, although the progress is slow. On Wednesday, October 26th, I attended a cancer presumption law seminar that was hosted by Goodwill Host Company Number Three, State Representative Frank Ferry, who wrote the cancer presumption law, was there. He reviewed the law and provided the requirements for the fire companies on how to maintain proper documentation, and he also talked about the potential impact on workers' compensation carriers. I attended the meeting with the PICO to discuss the electric meter issue. They advised us that they're in the process of changing out the meters that had problems in Bristol Borough. They're about 50 percent complete with that changeout. They indicated there had been 29 meters in the PICO area that had problems. 14 of them, they've identified the problems. The one that occurred on Wilson Avenue, they still have not identified the specific problem for that meter. The mayor's forwarded me several complaints concerning fire department operations, and I've responded back to the mayor. Part of the problem is that there are some fire chiefs in town that do not want to discuss issues at fire board meetings, but they've chosen to use the mayor to voice their issues. It's counterproductive to the purpose of having the fire board where we're supposed to meet and be able to iron out and discuss issues. As part of the email exchange with the mayor, the mayor's indicated that he doesn't believe that the borough needs to have fire chief positions. And so, I'd like to have the fire chief, the mayor, manager, the council president, and/or the council, sit down with, and discuss the mayor's plans and agenda concerning the fire department.
The mayor, you're saying that we don't need fire chiefs?
That's what the mayor's indicating.
Borough fire chiefs. Make that correction. Borough fire chiefs. Each fire company has their own fire chief.
Okay.
Saying, the way that he's talking about it is, in the email that he sent me, there's no need for any borough fire chiefs.
Herbie, don't think there's a need, or you don't think there's a need?
I don't think there's a need.
I believe in the other townships around here, there are none.
I just thought that, just-
If I can interject something here, I tried to resolve this problem before it comes to council, but apparently, Mr. Slack does not want to do that. I wanted to sit down with all the parties involved. Apparently, Mr. Slack does not want to do that. I had no other choice than to bring it to council, and I will bring it to council at a later date.
His attempt to resolve the issue was, "You will attend a meeting with me and the other deputy chief, where I will ask to have you removed." That was the threat that was conveyed to me. Attend the meeting or else. And there's been no meetings set up for this, and I don't think that the issues are type of issues that, first of all, people could sit down and resolve, and secondly, I would not want to sit in a meeting with the mayor and the other deputy chief without my own representative, so that, because I feel it would be a two-on-one meeting based on the way the mayor's handled things at this point.
Did I not ask you to set up a meeting with all the township chiefs and the borough fire chiefs?
Yes, you did, and I spoke to-
Because I was getting complaints?
I spoke to four of the five township fire chiefs, who all indicated they had no interest in holding a meeting with the borough chiefs. I sent an email-
The three of the, three of the four that you said had no interest, were never contacted.
Four out of five. Four out of five were contacted. I sent an email to all of the borough fire chiefs, and asked them, "Do you have issues with the township fire companies?" Three of the fire chiefs said they have no problems with the township fire companies, and one of them made some suggestions to improve relationships. They had no issues. So, there really wasn't a point in sitting down, having a meeting, when neither side had issues to discuss, other than the mayor wanted to have that meeting.
Which I have the right to do.
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand, was that what you said a few minutes ago, that you did have a meeting with the mayor, but the other guys didn't show up? Or did I misunderstand what you just said?
No, there was no meeting. The mayor had sent me an email and said, "I'm going to give you dates for a meeting, you'll attend the meeting, or I will have, I will ask to have council remove you."
Reese, what did you say?
Yes.
Well, now, you're not saying it properly. I asked you for dates. I didn't say I was going to give you dates. I asked you for dates to set up a meeting, and then we would go from there. Why don't you want to meet with these people? Can I ask you that question?
I think, based on, based on the original complaint-
And I sent you, and I sent, sent you a copy of a letter that was sent by a chief from the township?
Based, can I answer the first question?
Sure.
Based on the original complaint against me 18 months ago, that took you six months to investigate, the man is a proven and documented liar. I don't know how you resolve an issue with somebody that is a liar. I don't know how you could pass that.
You sit down with all parties involved, and then you find out who is not telling the truth. Okay?
You should know who told the truth, Mayor, you did the investigation.
Yeah, I know who's telling the truth.
Okay. I just want to add my two cents in, just for, I don't know how council feels about this, but, there's a process that, I mean, from what I understand, this council never got involved with the fire board, or whatever this was, consists of. Unless there was an issue that we had to hire or fire, and I could be wrong on this whole situation. If you're requesting a meeting with the mayor and a couple people, and you want to get a couple, I mean, somebody like Merle involved, or maybe the other chief, which is Goslin, or whoever, I don't have a problem trying to get this resolved, but I think that we need to get it off the council floor and into the fire meeting.
The mayor believes it's a personality issue. It is not.
Funny that you can think for me.
Does anybody make suggestions? Tony? Lorraine?
I'd rather stay out of it. I don't think you should be involved in it.
No, I'm sorry, no, I had no suggestions.
Patty?
Oh, yeah. I mean, he represents the borough. He represents us.
Right.
If the mayor's asking to meet with him, regardless of what he thinks about everybody else, he should meet with him. We've told him to take care of the situation. He's trying to. How's he going to if he doesn't want to meet with him? That shows poor, I don't know.
Well, I think he said he don't have a problem meeting with the mayor.
He wants to meet with just the mayor. It's good to get together with whoever and what these complaints are. Be grown-up men, get together, figure it out. We put that on him, so he can take care of it. He runs the fire department, doesn't he?
I don't know if he runs it or oversees it.
Well, whatever, he helps oversee it. Is that better? But, how's he going to oversee it if we have complaints, which I also got complaints this weekend? I'm sure most of you probably already did. We don't want to get involved, but then, he doesn't want to, I don't understand. How's the mayor going to be able to take care of the problem if the problem doesn't want to be resolved? I don't know. I can't say quite.
Would you mind sitting in on a meeting?
I'd be more than happy to.
All right, how about if me and you, the mayor, chief, the manager, I'm going to ask Merle, and Paul Goslin, who is one of the other fire chiefs, to sit in on this, and then, I guess, if Tony, if Tony got to come, whatever, we need to get this resolved.
I want, I want all people involved in it.
Who's, tell me who you want there, Bobby.
I want everybody. I want all the fire chiefs, from both the borough and from the township.
What has the township got to do with anything?
Well, they're doing it.
I mean, I really don't care what happens in the township. I'm only concerned what happens in Bristol.
Well, in the township, it's, it's starting to affect, probably, some of the operations of us going into the township, or the township coming into the borough.
I'm not going to get into this, massive meetings with townships and all these people. Now, I'm not personally, so, you guys could either come up with a solution and let us know, or, I mean, that's my suggestion. I mean, you feel like meeting with people in the township and everybody?
Well, I want to resolve this here. We have Bristol, we worry about Bristol first, okay? Do we, or do we not? I mean, he's a chief. He represents us. The mayor's trying to do his job. I'm getting a little tired, and I'm sure all of you are, too.
I don't even think we should be involved in it, but I'm willing to take and make my time out.
Exactly, but-
Just for the record, I did not bring this up to council. Okay? He went, again, behind my back to come to council, to bring a problem up that I can, I know I can resolve, between all the parties involved, without involving council.
All right, well, if you can't, let's do it this way. If you can't resolve it, then schedule a meeting with us.
Do that.
Ultimately, I work for council.
Exactly.
The ultimate answer is, I do work for council. They had the right to fire me and fire whoever.
The only person, the only time you can be removed from your duty is if somebody has five votes to remove you.
Right.
And I don't foresee that ever happening with this council, or removing any deputy, unless something really serious is going, going on that we don't know about. So, as far as I'm concerned, try to get it resolved. If you can't, if the mayor requests a meeting with the manager and whoever, I don't even need to be there. I mean, I have faith in Merle. The guy's got 50 years' experience in this. I have no experience. And I said from the beginning, when I got elected, I don't want to be involved with getting in personal feuds with firemen, because today, you guys are arguing, tomorrow, these are all friends. It's just not what I want to be involved in. My, our job is to run the town. But if there's an issue that can't be resolved, and there's a request that we come in, I have no problem sitting in, and I'm sure no member of council has a problem if they had to be involved in this, but from what I just heard, it seems like nobody really wants to get involved with this. But it's, to answer your question, we're the only ones that can remove you from your position. And I don't know how that's going to happen. Anybody have any questions for the fire chief?
I heard you say about the carbon monoxide detectors, this is very slow.
Yes.
When did we start installing them?
When did we?
Yeah.
Probably at least a year ago.
A year ago?
Yep.
Who does them?
Who does them? All of the fire companies are supposed to do them.
All the companies?
Yes.
And then, so why is it so, or how behind are we?
Probably about 70 behind right now.
Just 70?
Of the requests every time.
And how many did we install?
Almost 400. There's, and there's several reasons. One is our scheduling, and the other thing is that, times, people have sent requests and trying to catch up with that person's schedule. There's also been, on multiple occasions, where people have set up a date and a time for us to show up, and we did, and they weren't there, so then we have to go back and follow up, so there's a lot of repeat business in trying to get them installed. And we also now have smoke alarms, we'll have 1,500 smoke alarms, so that, what, in the process of installing carbon monoxide alarms, we check your smoke alarms, and if they're too old, or you don't have the right number, we'll install new smoke alarms for you also.
Do you have them right now?
Yes.
You do?
Yep.
So, anybody that needs a smoke alarm could call you right now?
Yes. They could just call the same thing as they would call for a carbon monoxide alarm. And the, the smoke alarms are a result of another federal grant that we had received.
What was that number, again?
57854501, extension 27.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the fire chief? I'm going to go through council before I go to public participation. Craig, what do you have?
Just a few things. It was brought to my attention that there was a sanitation station for dogs on the, where the World War II memorial is now. Few people in the area who like to walk their dogs were asking if something like that could come back. I don't know if it being right on the island is the best idea, but maybe-
We got criticized for that being there.
Yeah.
Tons of phone calls, we finally took it down, now there's people that want it.
Right.
So-
I got you. Okay, well-
I don't know what, but, I mean, you know, it's a war memorial, we got to-
I don't want it on the war memorial.
But where do you put it?
I was saying, maybe across the street or something.
They're not even going to walk, then, the guy don't want it on his sidewalk.
Right.
You can't put it down near Finney McGee's, because they're not, if they're that lazy, don't carry a bag, they're not going to walk over there to go get one.
But, you know, if we put one across the street, they might ask for them at every street.
Yeah, I don't, I mean-
I mean, but I definitely don't think dogs should be-
That's been like a major-
So, there's no support for the doggy sanitation station, is what I'm getting at?
I don't, I didn't see there was a reason why it should have been removed.
All right.
It was behind the wall.
Bring my own back.
It didn't interfere with the property, as far as I was concerned, and I think that it served the purpose that if somebody didn't have a bag-
Right.
And they were viewing this memorial, they could have easily got one.
Right.
But, the manager got flooded with phone calls about, in the borough, that it should be removed.
Okay. All right. I have a question about signs around town. I know we have an ordinance. What is the ordinance about people putting up signs? I guess it's that time of year for yard sales, or whatever else it might be. But I, I mean, maybe it's just me, but in the last two weeks or three weeks, I've seen more signs hung on what I think is borough property, all over the place. And, you know, I, there's got to be some sort of rhyme or reason, or some order to that, because it's getting a little out of control from the things we see.
Well, out of the courtesy that people are doing, the yard sales and these flea markets, we try to, they're borough residents, and they're doing these, we try to turn the other way on this.
Right.
But we also hope that they, as soon as it ends, that we go take them down.
Right, and I-
And they don't.
I totally agree with that philosophy.
And our guys are out there taking them down. Maybe we need to put something in that says, "If it's not taken down, at the end of the day-"
Right.
"-we find out that address and cite them."
Yeah.
Or send them a bill for the borough's time.
And, you know, and I think, I think that, I understand that philosophy, but also, if we could just ask, you know, not, not mandate, just ask, that you take a little pride in those signs, that the signs we're putting up. I mean, there was a sign all over town that was called M-O-V-I-N sale, move-in sale. And it was everywhere. It was posted on every street corner I could see, and, you know, that's-
Craig, they're moving. They're moving.
I know what it's saying, but that's just not the way I would like the town to be represented. You know, I'm just asking that people take pride in those signs.
I agree with you.
And then, I have one other question, two other questions. Do we know, Mr. Dillon, or Ralph, what's happening with Danuses as of late? It's been, it's been boarded up for some time. Obviously, there was a fire there, but there just seems to be no movement on it in the last few months. I don't know if we have any information on what's happening with Danuses, the old Danuses, I should say.
I don't have any at the moment, though.
Okay. If we could look into that. And then, I, one other area I'd like to put on our radar screen. I know we've discussed it before, again, that same general vicinity, but I guess it's the old bus garage, is that what people call it, right there on Farragut Avenue? There's that gravel parking lot that I believe is private property, in between the row of, you know, where Burt's Bar is and Book Bar's station, as well as the bus garage, there's that open lot, but it, it's got lots of problems, and there's also some sort of, you know, dumping behind there. I'm just wondering if we can really start putting that on our radar as a possible place to just kind of check out and see what's going on there, and see if we can make some recommendations, and then help them get moving on that, that property. It's right in the middle of the block, but I think a lot of good things are happening, but, right now, it just, it's, it's like a, you know, it's just, got a lot of problems. So, I don't know what to say.
Are there still dumpings behind it?
I actually checked that out the other day, as far as the dump. It looks like they actually, they condensed the dump that was back there. It looks like they've actually gotten some of the things that they use for junk a little bit more in order, which is nice. It's not as bad as it once was. It's still not ideal to have a place where you junk things back there, but it looks like they at least attempted to get that in order, so, that's all I have.
All right.
I have a question. Has the Borough Pub given its plans for the spaces for the parking lot yet?
No, I don't believe so. I'll confirm that one way or the other and get back to you. I know they were in, and Sally gave them the, the information that's required, but I'm not sure. I'll check with them.
I wish that they would get on that, because, you know, it's affecting the parking in the area for the people that live there. And it's also affecting the lot next door, where we put the school buses. So, I don't know. I'm hoping that they get on that as soon as possible. And also, there's a lot of loitering out in front of that building. They're smoking out in front. I wish we could do something about maybe a little area.
You talked to them about that, didn't you?
I did.
And what was their-
They, they definitely said that they were exploring that, that it might be part of the greater parking lot plan.
Okay. And also, I wanted to talk to the chief of police about, there's been speeding on Wilson Avenue, and going through stop signs, and I even saw a dog get hit by a car. He's okay, but, you know, I, I think that we need something, some police presence there. Thank you, that's all I, that's all I have.
No, I don't have anything to do.
Yes, Gordon Street. I could put a request in for some time to be spent over there with the borough crew. There are some neighbors that are taking control of their area across the street from our homes. There's other people that aren't. I was wondering if the borough crew can go out there and at least hit in between, it's starting to look really bad. Also, Mr. Devine had called me a couple weeks ago about saying that there would be a meeting. Tony, can you help me out with that?
We're supposed to have, Mr. Dillon, we were supposed to, come up, if we got anything set up yet with-
There's nothing set up.
Mr. Fitzpatrick's chief of staff for Bucks County is working on it. She advised last week that the, the head person at Amtrak was away, and I hope to hear something this week.
Come.
I've asked John Miller also to start filing a citation against Amtrak for the weed, et cetera. You know, at least start that process. That's like, what, an ant going against an elephant or something, but we've started that legal process. But hopefully, we'll have a meeting with Amtrak in the next two weeks.
Also, on Mr. Waldron's report, he states that tobacco is getting to the point of no return. Do you mind if I address Mr. President?
Go ahead.
George-
Is he here? I didn't even see him sitting there.
George-
George, get on your podium, please.
I guess you're right here.
What condition, basically, would you say it's in? Very poor?
It's getting it. It's 15 going on 16. I got some pictures for, I mean, if you guys- If you guys. It's a big part of our snow fighting equipment.
Thank you.
It's very important. It's not just for snow, it's for a number of other things besides that. Look at color, good job.
Thank you.
You can get back there and talk. Take it here, you want, thank you.
Four by four? No. We, we're allowed to, Mr. DeJesepe, we're allowed to, or Mr. Councilman, we're allowed, or Council President, we're allowed to go out the state bids, correct?
Where it would be purchased from.
Right. What, George, what are they running in this area today?
For, for a machine today, a four-by-four extender hoe. Five eighties, a Super L or K. They're about between $75,000 and $80,000.
And that is- That has helped us out. Last year was a very mild winter, thank God, but the years before, we're able to lift up the snow and clean streets with tobacco.
Like I said, it's, it's a big part of our, our snow fighting equipment. You know, loads of chalks, it removes snow, it pushes snow.
This was bought at Eagle. It's the last snow, the last tobacco?
Yes, yep.
Up on 309?
They're, they have the state contract. Again, it's not just used for snow, we use it for leaves, we use it for a number of things. We use it for sewers, we use it for moving dirt, you know, trees down. It's many uses. And like I said, now, it's, it's going on 16 years old, it has about 6,000 hours on it, and it's rusting out, as you can see in some of these pictures. I think it's getting to the point where it's not cost-effective to keep it. I mean, we have other uses, maybe we can send it down our sewer plant, it's probably good for one area, but the way we use it, it's like, you know what I mean? It's going to take its beating.
It's something maybe we should look, Mr. President, down the road, at maybe looking at this. I guess we'd have to do that after we do our budget, though, correct?
Are you seeing this?
No, looking if we can afford one.
The manager had a plan, I don't know if you want to explain it? Yeah. George and I have been talking about it the last couple months. I asked George to put it in his report. I believe we can cobble enough funds from various accounts to get to purchase this piece of equipment in the next 30 to 45 days. I'd like to confirm that. I'd like to recommend that council put it on your agenda for Monday night, authorizing the purchase off of the state bid list, and I'll have a memo in your packet explaining how we'll get the funds. But, it's also, would be, we take this old machine and put it down to sewer plant, where it would help those fellows down there. I don't think we should wait till, you know, January or so, we start getting hit with storms in November, December. I think we'll need it, really, so, I'd like to recommend that council consider authorizing the purchase from the state bid list at, at next Wednesday night's meeting.
Mr. President, I think that that would be a very smart and good move to keep the borough crew ready for the upcoming winter, not knowing what it's going to bring, but also the fact that it's a multifaceted machine. And I definitely recommend, and I'm sure George would, that the extender hoe, which is very beneficial, and a four-by-four.
John Knight and Pat.
I'd like to put that on the agenda.
Just one other thing, too, this is-
As from Mr. Dillon's conversations with George.
And this is like, now we've got the new building, I mean, this, this has never had its home inside, it's kind of been outsized, so, it's just one of those things that we said from the beginning, with the new garage, everything's inside, it's going to last a lot longer. 16 years is really not bad for a backhoe, but again, I think, you know, being, having a new building, it's going to be kept inside, and I think we're just going to get our, you know-
You have any problems with the ball bearings, or the ball bearings?
On this one, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They've been replaced four times.
Okay, now, on the ball fields, everything looks good?
Everything came out great.
When I went by there, it looked terrific. Well, thank you guys.
On, go ahead.
Thank Ernest, and also thank the borough, with George keeping a good eye on that, and...
Pat, just one other thing on the ball fields. What we're going to do come the spring, after, after the fall, we're going to get a rubber tire roller and roll the field. We can get like a heavy roller out there, 16-ton roller, and rule that field, and it's gonna be, it's gonna help it.
RNS, just for the record, he did Holy Ghost's baseball field, and he did two at our lacrosse fields, so he's very familiar with that kind of work.
Well, obviously, he did a great job.
He recommended to George that when we, when the fall comes, he would bring over his eight-foot, it's an eight-foot roller, George?
Yes.
And roll the fields. He said that outfield will be as flat as can be. There won't be no rigid sticking up or no work, somebody gets tripped. He said, and you'll have a field that, it'll be amazing if you run that roller over it. So, he's not gonna charge us. I mean, matter of fact, he's always loaning you guys equipment, George.
Always, yeah.
You need backhoes when we're in trouble with snow, or you need saws, or whatever. I mean, he has never charged us Borough a dime for anything he loaned us.
Never said no.
Exactly.
I know we had a big discussion last time about the job. I thought he was in construction. I didn't know he did fields.
Well, he does. He's an excavator.
About...
The one gentleman that he got over there does a lot of work up in Newtown, with their baseball system. And this guy really took our fields to heart and his shows. I mean, he turned them around, and he's really spent a lot of time, and did a nice job.
George, no...
I think the kids are gonna be pleased.
How is the condition of the sweeper?
Sweeper's running great.
Okay.
Sweeper's six years old. We have some minor stuff that's just general maintenance that we do every year on it, but other than that, it's...
But being inside's really helping it now.
It helps. Everything's inside.
Right. Mr. Salerno, ordinance on the amount of cats and dogs in the home. Do we have such an ordinance? How many we're allowed?
We have... We definitely have an ordinance regarding the number, I think it's the number of domestic pets. I just don't think it's dogs.
I had a phone call up telling I had a problem on Pine Street, and I still didn't get a call back. If you could, if Maria could let John know, give me a call back. Gotcha?
I got a problem on Elm Street.
Okay.
And I talked to the people at the SPCA, and I think their state law is you can't have more than five cats. Over that, it's, you become a hoarder, and they could physically come in and remove these cats. So, I know that's state law, and I don't know if we have anything that supersedes that, that says less, but she told me that, the girl from the SPCA, that you can't exceed five.
Okay. So, I'll check in with Maria tomorrow morning. Other than that, the only agenda item is tobacco, and if we can get Garden Street under control, it would really help out a lot.
I think we should try to get this meeting set up before we do anything.
What's that?
Before we do anything there, I like to try to get these people back out there to see what it looks like. Because a picture, a picture's a picture, but I think physically looking at it, I mean, I know how bad it is, and I understand your concern, Tony's. I just think that Mike, I talked to him again the other day, and they're doing everything they can to expedite this meeting.
Okay. That's, I can live with that. The key is, though, I'd like it ASAP, because what it does, in my opinion, is it deflates the value of the properties that are near there, makes the town look bad, and it's really an eyesore just to drive down that street. And the simple fact that they had pulled out, not finished the other side, just says a lot about wasteful spending in Washington.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, if someone wants to jump on a tractor, now they can go up to Prospect Street. They don't have to go through the jungle.
Well, yeah, Pat.
Just tobacco for this month. Thank you.
Patty?
Now that the fields are gonna be done, maybe we should really look into doing a dog park in this town? Because I know during summertime, when the kids are all playing there in early mornings or in evenings, people just love walking their dogs over there and letting them go all over the place. And I don't ever see anybody picking up what their dogs leave behind. And, Mr. Dillon, do we know when Pico on Swaying Street plans on replacing those trees?
No. They did say they would take them out and replant, but I'll get you, see if they'll give us a date.
Okay. And that's all I have for today.
Do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Just wanna run down a few things, and I'll go to public participation. I know Kurt's waiting. We need to set up, start our union negotiations, and I have asked Councilman Pezza and Councilwoman Trinell if they would sit on that board, and they accepted. We'll try to make these, we're trying to get meetings at night. The union's saying they only can meet during the day. I understand your schedule, but we're doing the best we can. The cameras at Mill Run are now connected, and they're viewing them. It's something we could discuss maybe next month, if you wanna...
The chief, get a recommendation.
Get a recommendation from the chief, how we wanna handle from there. We have voted earlier to give the parade committee their money again, so maybe we could contact them and have them come in Monday night or in the beginning...
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, and give them their check. Nobody has a problem with that. On this police civilian complaint review board, the board is filled, but I'd like to know if Council has any problem with us, since it's a board that doesn't meet that often, and when they do meet, people sometimes can't make it. I'd like to know if the board has any problem with us adding an alternate to the board, and I'm recommending Karen Dobson to sit as an alternate on this board. So, if nobody has a problem with that, I'd like to put that on Monday's agenda to make Karen an alternate for this board.
I definitely would like to see that happen.
How many people sit on the board now?
How many are on the board? Seven or five?
About seven, I guess. It's full at the moment.
Whatever it is, I'd like to...
That's fine.
See if we could add her as an alternate, and then hopefully, you know, I think she'd be an asset to that board.
Is that advertised now?
So, if nobody has a problem with that, I'm gonna put it on Monday's agenda. Wednesday's, I keep saying Monday.
Okay. We know what you mean.
Mr. Council President, that civilian review board, that is the one with Mr. Santone?
Yes.
Okay.
We had interviewed some inspection firms the other day, myself and Mr. Pezza, the manager, our...
So, what's, you want that, right?
Sally and John, and we interviewed four firms, and I'll explain to you in executive session, since it's personnel, what our feelings were when we got done the four interviews. We discussed the public works backhoe. There are final change orders for the public works facility. Does everybody have them yet?
I have them. I was gonna give them out.
Mr. Dillon passed them out, and we, they were ratified, and we could vote on that Monday night. They were the last two or three change orders.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night. It was for the landscaping and a couple things that were done right at the end of the job. And if anybody knows anybody that has a Christmas tree that's really nice, contact the Borough. We're looking for a Christmas tree this year from Mill Street. So, if anybody, I know a lot of people say I have one, but they're like Charlie Brown. They just want us to cut them down and get them out of their yard. But if somebody really has a nice one, they don't have to live in Bristol. I mean, we've been getting them all over town, so if the two newspapers wanna print something on that, we're looking for a really nice Christmas tree.
I've got the handicap...
George, I'm sorry.
Just wanna mention, when we get these trees, there's no cost to the homeowners. Our tree guy takes the tree down, takes the stump out, and it's...
And cleans up.
It's good for everyone, and he does a nice job, so...
I said, it's a win-win for the homeowner...
Definitely.
As long as, you know, the tree's nice. I mean, we send out you and a couple people that...
The local tree.
Yeah. If it's worth for us to do that, we'll do it. I mean, we're not just gonna take a tree down. The other thing I wanted to let our Borough residents know and everybody else, that we're now going into the state of the art from where we were, you can now pay your sewer bills online. So, it's another major step that this Borough has taken. You go online, you make your payments to the Borough, so a lot of people like doing that. A lot of people don't wanna write checks anymore and mail things. So, we are online now to make your sewer payments. So, Dillon, you have anything?
Have, for next Wednesday night, the proposed resolution authorizing Council to purchase a residential property known as, well, it's 1044 Chestnut Street from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, in the amount of $51,400. This house was purchased, I believe, in 2007, 2008 for $129,000. The homeowner walked away from the property. HUD took it back. A local realtor notified the Borough that this was in transition. We reached out to HUD through Mr. Salerno, and because of that heads-up by the local realtor who was trying to help the Borough, we're now in a position to acquire it for $51,400. So, I think it's, you know, I think it fits the overall continuing plan of Council to try to acquire these homes at market value. Also, in your packet for next Wednesday will be a proposed amendment to the police ordinance to comply with the Auditor General's recommendations.
I've got the handicap...
I guess about, I get, oh, the only other thing that I have is, there was a memo in your packet dated September 28th. It was addressed to Council and the mayor from myself. It deals with the Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, deals with their annual risk review assessment. As you're aware, the Delaware Valley Insurance Trust is the Borough's workers' compensation carrier. Dividends, a trust comprised of select municipalities, we are selective, who are selective in their membership, and continually monitor the loss modifications of its members. I note that there was a 14-page analysis of the Borough's operations, which includes the Borough Hall, sewer plant, the public works facilities, or pumping stations. And basically, if you had the opportunity to read the report, I think it reflects well on the operations of the Borough. I'd like to just highlight a few points, but however, the trust, paragraph four of that letter is again expressing concern relative to the lack of progress with respect to the volunteer firefighter medical exam. So, I think it's something that somehow we're gonna have to sit down and try to address, especially with this new legislation about the cancer issue, which some insurance carriers have went out, have decided not to even write it. So, the market is growing smaller and smaller. But anyhow, the letter, you know, says that the long-needed upgrades to the public works complex have turned out nicely. They had pointed out back in 2007 about not only the condition of the building, but about the floodplain issues. And based on their review, the facility now appears to meet the minimum industry standards for a modern public works operation, and they're happy to hear that the problematic flooding of the yard has been eliminated, which helps ensure the continuity of operations during major storm events. And they also point out that, about the improvements down at the wastewater plant also, so... But anyhow, I, again, I think they're somewhat distressed that there's been no progress or very little progress with respect to the volunteer firefighter medical exam. So, it's something, you know, I think we have to consider addressing soon.
Just before we go into, a couple other things. The handicap ramps that we wanna do, every year, we wanna do so many ramps. We contacted a couple contractors. One's a local contractor that lives in town. He notified us that he's just too busy at this point to get involved. We contacted, the only person who has showed an interest in this was RNS. If anybody has a contractor, any councilman, anybody at home that is interested in doing handicap ramps for the Borough, please contact the Borough, because if not, then we'll try to negotiate a deal with RNS to do some of these ramps. But, I mean, he's the only one that contacted us. I mean, a lot of local people can handle it, but they don't wanna go through the process of work, doing government work, and the insurance and everything that's required. So, we're interested in getting the best breaks we can for the Borough. I'm sure you can tell, he talked to a few people in town. I don't wanna mention, I can tell Council afterwards who they were. But RNS is the only one that showed an interest that he would work with, is either in ripping them out and forming them, or pouring, or whatever we need to do anything. So, if any member of Council, anybody at home, the public, has a contractor that's interested in doing ramps, contact us hopefully by next week, because we like to get something done before it gets too cold. Okay. Kurt, what do you, how many minutes you need?
Five. You're up.
Good. Oh, thank you. More.
The manager just thought I should come down and give an update on where we are at the boat docks. Last month was a big month. We got two applications filed, one to the county for a million dollars, and one to the federal government for 1.5 million. And we won't find out from the federal application until March, but both are critical to each other. We can't do the project without getting both of them. And just last, I think it was Monday or Tuesday night, we went to Bucks County...
Wednesday.
Wednesday night?
Wednesday night.
We gave a presentation to the Bucks County Open Space Committee, and they're a recommending board to the commissioners. And it's a program that has $7 million funded for a referendum countywide, and it's available to 17 different municipalities along the Delaware River in Bucks County, and we're asking for a million dollars. The Borough was already approved two years ago for $480,000, but as you know, the type of project that's proposed is expensive. It's out in the waterway. So, Mr. Dillon just asked I run through the presentation real quick that we gave to the county, and now we're waiting for the commissioners to vote on it. But like I said, it's the County of Bucks Open Space Committee under their open space program for the Delaware River front. I apologize, it may be difficult to see in the room here. Hopefully, it shows up better on the television, but this is a rendering of what's proposed there. You can see the dock extending out from the existing Bristol Pavilion. It accommodates 25, 26-foot-long boats, which, if you have smaller boats, you have a lot more space. But we believe it's a good-size project for the amount of demand that we'll see, which is a lot. And there's an incredible amount of support that we're seeing on this, even at the county and state levels. So, part of the discussion about this application and why it was so expensive is that to build something, if you've seen the river flooding, you know what kind of stuff occurs. You have the seven-foot tide fluctuation, you have debris that comes down, you have ice that comes down in the wintertime. There's tugboats that make three-plus-foot wake. So, this thing is built rock solid, and that costs a lot of money. That's why we need 2.5 million. But we ran through some of the different agencies that have done reports on the need for a boating facility in Bristol, and you can just see we highlighted a few of them and what their themes and recommendations are. We demonstrated what kind of use we anticipate. There are so many... There are so many festivals and activities that take place, uh, we highlight the fact that this is such a unique opportunity because we already have the infrastructure there, we don't have to build a parking lot, we don't have to build a downtown area, it's already there, and that's pretty unique, uh, for what we're trying to do. There's a lot of other municipalities in the county, like Ben Salem, for instance, who wants to build a dock, but they don't have restaurants and towns and banks and other services that these transient boaters will travel to as a destination. And one of the things I like to, uh, for me, the favorite thing, I, I traveled through the Chesapeake Bay in a boat one time when I was younger, it's a lot of fun, but this would represent the northernmost public access in the entire Chesapeake Bay and Delaware Bay, along the Delaware River. So the furthest north destination on the Delaware River, where you can tie up your boat and go to a true downtown environment, where you have restaurants and pizza parlors and boutiques and anything else you might wanna travel to. And I really think that that's gonna represent a huge destination point for any boater, and it's the most, it's the largest network of inland tidal waterways, it's a tremendous amount of boaters that use it, it's a pretty significant statistic, and we made sure to highlight that in our applications. Uh, we ran through some of the history about what a unique area the waterfront is, and that the canal ran through to the Bristol Marsh and what its use was, and the fact that this town has struggled because they lost that access to the water, and to restore that in some fashion, even though it's not an industrial use like this borough was founded on, this recreational use is gonna be huge for the economics of the downtown area. Uh, so I'll just kinda jump through some of these things, 'cause I know, in a hurry, but we just showed how tied in, this is Bucks County Redevelopment Authority slide for what they envision, you can see they have a boat launch, or a public access illustrated there, and by the way, Bob White from the Redevelopment Authority came along with the manager and I, and he really had a lot of positive things to say about this application, he really helped, uh, you know, drive it home to the committee, and said that this has been a big project for the Redevelopment Authority, they've always wanted to see this happen, and they wanna make sure that the county supports it at this time, because it's never been more real, the opportunities to do this are today. There's a picture in the top right, and I think some of you may have seen this before, but that's a similar-looking access pier. Now that we've submitted the application, we showed the county who our partner application was to, was to the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife Service, and actually, the applicant for the borough was Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission. So the borough didn't even apply for the 1.5 million to the federal government, the Fish and Boat Commission of Pennsylvania made the application on the borough's behalf. We wrote the application, but they actually filed it as the applicant, and, uh, and they have a lot of weight, because they've been doing studies and they really want this access in Bristol. So we showed the, the project budget and timeline, as you can see here, if we are successful in getting the funding, which should be announced in March of 2013, we can do the permitting process at the end of 2013 through the middle of 2014, we can put the project out for a public bid, and hopefully, if all goes well, by the end of 2014, this facility will be at the end of Mill Street. Uh, you can see the cost breakdown and what the eligible costs are, we are required to have a 25% match, minimum match to the federal grant, and the county's 1 million after we break down eligible costs is 28.5%. You can see it's just over 25%, so we really pleaded to the county that they, they can't chop us off at the knees here, we need the full 1 million. They give us less than that, it could jeopardize our ability to spend the one and a half...
Well, they already gave us $480,000, so we're asking them for additional 520, correct?
Yep.
But that $520,000 gets us a million and a half dollars through the federal government.
That's right.
So this board, I mean, overwhelmingly approved this for the county commissioners to approve. I mean, I'd be very shocked if the county commissioners...
We'd be very disappointed.
...refuse the project of, what this can do for our town, and they have $7 million, correct?
Well, it's all borrowed referendum money, they have to go out to bond and pull the money in and...
I mean, they've been very good to us, I mean, for them to pull the plug now, like you said...
Yeah.
It's like being in the middle of the river and they pull the plug, you can't...
Yeah, it would be, you know, and we talked a little bit about the federal government has this program right now, we don't know if these federal programs are gonna be around next year, they might be gone next year, so, point being is, now's the time to strike while the iron's hot. The only concern the county gave us as feedback was that we're asking for one-seventh of the money, and there are 17 municipalities.
How many of them municipalities are gonna do a project of this magnitude, or can even do?
They can.
They can. So we're on the water, this is a great project, and, you know, I, and I said to council, I feel good about this project when it first started, and, uh, I just hope May 14th of next year, we're out the bid, and by the end of the year, we have a docking system in Bristol.
One last slide that we showed the committee was what the borough's been doing in the last few years. We highlighted the renovation of this building that we're in right now, we highlighted the borough public works facility, and we highlighted the road program, and we said if any municipality can pull off a project like this, it's Bristol Borough, and their insistence on being successful and getting these jobs done, and being relentless and trying to bring in outside money to make it happen. And we all got positive head shakes, they're very proud of the town and what it's been doing, um, and at the end of the day, I think there were five committee people present, one person submitted an email with their thoughts on it, and, uh, we got a five-one vote. The only one who voted against it had said that since we're asking for more money than what the program originally said would be acceptable for an improvement project, they had like a $250,000 cap for a single application, we'd already gotten 480, so we already bent the guidelines there, now we're asking for a full million, he felt a little reluctant, I think he was a little upset that his municipality had gone in for a bigger grant application and got denied, but, again, that project is nothing like the magnitude of what this project is, so we're hoping that the commissioners feel the same way. And we're not sure, I don't know, Mr. Dillon, do you have any schedule on commissioners, or...
I spoke with the Lynn Bush, the county executive of the Planning Commission, and she said she'd be getting back to us soon as to the timeline, but she's aware of the need for additional correspondence to the federal government, she said she'll work with you about getting a letter down there, so...
Okay.
Well, I would expect, uh, probably by next January at the latest, for the county commissioners. But I would like to say Bob White, I think, was a tremendous help, uh, he, he came, uh, to the meeting, which was outside of Doylestown, and made a tremendous presentation and endorsed the, uh, the project, and I think it helped, uh, with that advisory board, and I think Gilmore put on a first-class presentation. That's why we're in the position we are, Kurt, as the right people of that. All right? Anybody have any questions for Kurt?
I just, I just wanna add, you know, I've worked with Kurt in something different in the last few weeks, and we were very lucky to have Gilmore and Associates represent us, particularly Kurt.
I agree.
We're happy to be here, it's a lot of fun working together. Tremendous work and everything that you did, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're the man.
We will keep...
Thank you, Kurt. Public participation, Mr. Pezza.
The teachers are trained to, to, uh, look at body language, and you guys are tired, and I understand, and justifiably so, but I think what we just saw is, illustrates something that I think is very important about local government. You went through some of the mundane things of local government tonight, you bought a backhoe, you're gonna buy a backhoe, you do all these things, you go to bed tonight, you're not sure you made the town any better, but you're doing the things the government needs to do to move it, move it forward on a day-by-day basis. But what Kurt just talked about is the kind of thing you're here for, the kind of exciting thing that can really transform the town. I wanna congratulate all of you as council members for your vision, this, this project is so linked to other things, I'm on the Redevelopment Authority, and I know Bob White went and spoke in favor of it, this project is so interwoven with other things, like you identified stocks as a possible redevelopment site where you're gonna try to blight it and tear it down and whatnot. This kind of project is what will bring investors to town. When we talk about the Economic Development Committee we created, the committee has an easier job, uh, you have an easier job, when you can say to someone who's thinking about moving into Mill Street, we've got 30 or 40 docks, you know, 30 or 40 slips right down to the end of the street. It doesn't have to be people, for us, we don't have to own boats to benefit from this thing, we benefit by what it does for the town. With that, I wanna put in one more plug for next, uh, when is it, Tuesday? A week, a week from tomorrow, at the Bristol Riverside Theater, uh, we're bringing in Mayor Malley from Collingswood, New Jersey, a town very much like Bristol that has experienced a dramatic transformation, and, and I think it's, it's to your benefit that you have welcomed him here, because, uh, you know, the day we stop moving forward is the day we start moving backwards. I wanna put out a special plea to young 20-year-olds and 30-year-olds who own homes in town, uh, they shouldn't sit back and wait for you or, or an older generation to get the job done, they have an investment, they bought a home, the future of this town directly affects them financially, and I think those kinds of people need to get involved as well. So it's, uh, Tuesday, October 9th, 7 o'clock, Bristol Riverside Theater, $10 tickets, includes a wine and cheese, and, um, you can buy the tickets at Mignon's, create IDs by hand, or the borough tax office, and we hope to see all of you there as well. Thank you very much.
All right.
Keep doing the good job.
Anybody else have anything on this side of the room?
Mr. De Giuseppe mentioned the change orders, I have them here, I just wanna put on the record, uh, we had a close-out meeting for the public works facility about, uh, 10 days ago, two weeks ago, there's a total of 34 change orders, uh, the total net of all the change orders is $161,255.70, so with the original contract being $2,552,855.29, the total final contract amount is $2,714,110.99. So the total change orders represents 6.3% of the total project, so I just wanna get that on the record.
We did a lot of giving and taking on this job. Anybody, anybody else have anything, anybody on this side of the room would like to speak? I got a motion to adjourn.